This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
College Highway and Valley Road to Commercial Highway. Um, and you know, I got a little sketch plan here, which of course it's rotated, but this is the Valley Road, College Highway, the Red Barn that sits out there. Um, and what they're proposing is to try to generate some more commercial highway property instead of industrial. They feel that they'd rather do commercial properties, which is lacking in Southampton, and as opposed to industrial facility on that piece of property, which that's what it's going for. Little bit of Butters and stuff.
Mark, how much of that acreage did we just approve for stormwater for the storage facility?
So the storage facility is right over in this corner. Um, and honestly, I'll get that information relative to the acreage, Paul, for the hearing. But, um, the storage facilities are allowed in either zone.
Correct, correct, yeah.
So, but I'll get you the acreage. Actually, I probably have it sitting on my desk here. But I'll get that information, Paul.
Okay, I just wondered how much, how many acres out of that 14 at the other side? I can't remember offhand.
Yeah, I will get that. I'll write myself a note. So on the 15th, I get you some, an answer.
All right.
Um, can I just ask?
Sure. Yep.
It just seemed to me when you just used your cursor there, you put that storage facility kind of in the corner down there with the valley. I thought it was back further, closer to where the number 399 is, because isn't the corner all wet?
So the corner is, you're right, Cindy. So the, excuse me, the proposed driveway is going to come in right here to the north side of the barn. So the facility is right in here.
Okay.
In this section of it. So, so the intent is that, you know, potentially the barn could be something for use for, it doesn't work for industrial. Nothing industrial is going to go into the barn, but it could be used for commercial. Um, whether it be, who knows, you know, there's a lot more options. And then all the property to the south side of the barn would be the future development for commercial. But yes, I'll get you the acreage. And I'll do an overlay. I probably have it right here, too.
And maybe the overlay would answer the question, but between this portion that they're talking about the zone change, all the way to the line of the next neighbor, might think is Kate, isn't it, who owns the orchard? Or is there another, oh, there's another owner in between?
Yeah, Wing, Wing Farm.
Excuse me, I just got a message from Joy saying she needs to be let into the meeting.
Sorry.
That's okay.
I wasn't paying attention to the.
Also, my phone buzzed. No, what? Sorry.
So this is, this is owned by the estate of Tim Wing.
Oh, okay.
And it's, it's a field, farm field in this area. Um, across the street is his barn and he has horses across the street.
Hmm.
So, and then Kate's property is probably down here where the legend is in the title box.
Hmm.
Going into Wintergreen, going into Wintergreen.
Okay.
The Labree's currently own all this property going all the way up to the Kinnicky Farm.
Okay.
So all this property.
Okay.
But I'll get that answer and I will do a, I'll have a kind of an overlay. So we can superimpose it on this map.
Very good. And again, that'll come up on the 15th of February. The notices have gone out. The legal notice was published last evening. Be published again next Tuesday. The Butters have been notified and, um.
So can you check with Paul Fergal on that? Because I'm going to be out of town that day.
Yes, I, I, I will. And I did get your note that you will be out of town. So yes.
Okay, all right.
Will do. Thank you, Mark.
Okay, I'll see you in two weeks.
Thank you very much.
And have a great time up in the great north, Cindy.
Okay.
Yeah.
Joey, sorry, I didn't, I wasn't paying attention to the screen, so I didn't mean to.
No worries.
I didn't mean to ignore you. I wish.
I was running late. No worries.
All right, the second agenda item is again, an application for a stormwater, residential stormwater. Got a letter from Levekan Associates who is representing, uh, Christian Casa.
Yeah, we spoke about this property before.
Yep, 71 White Loaf Road. So she's formally, um, applied for a stormwater residential permit. Again, uh, the Butters have been notified. The legal notice was published at the same time that the previous application we just spoke of was, um, the check's been received for the application fee and they've also prepaid the legal announcement. So they're ready to go. Um, and Richard Harris has been notified with the plans and he'll be on board with us for the 15th to, um, monitor that and consult on it. They doubt very seriously it'll require a peer review because most residential don't. What will give his take on it and, uh?
I believe this clearing is, uh, it's over 100, 106, 150, uh, thousand square feet. So due to its size, it's up to debate whether it is up for peer review or not.
Oh, seriously, huh?
Yeah, this is the one that, that, um.
That big?
There's a large clearing and we had the building inspector go out and last time we came to the agreement with, with the property owner to, that as long as he doesn't cut down any more trees and allows the vegetation to regrow itself, that there would be no further enforcement necessary. So, um, we'll have to see what, what they're proposing, but it was to let all that vegetation grow back.
Interesting.
Yep.
Um, so that's that. That's scheduled for the 15th as well. We'll probably hear, um, both of them. I don't know which order they'll come in, but it doesn't make any difference. They're going to be both heard that evening. Uh, speaking of stormwater, and then the next on the agenda, I don't have very much else, um, but, uh, the building inspector contacted me this week. I think I may have copied you folks on about 81 Valley Road, which was in question. Neighbor complained. The building inspector went up, Marla Hank, I guess you guys were aware of that too, Dan, um, on 81 Valley where the property was being excavated. He had a building permit that was, uh, out there. The planning board nor the conservation committee had signed off on it. He hadn't got to us yet, uh, because I had no idea what Ron was talking about. Uh, anyway, Paul Fergal, um, did a analysis of the disturbance there and it's about 45,000 square feet. So Ron Lauren issued a cease and desist order, stopped work order to the person that owns the property who's out of West Springfield. Um, and, uh, it's, it's just funny that folks just come in and start tearing, tearing the land apart and stuff and don't know that there's thresholds or whatever it might occur. Uh, the neighbor has water running onto their property because of some of the excavation. So, um, it's kind of comical because once the, um, property owner did get back to Ron and he explained to him the situation, he said, do I need a lawyer? Ron says, no, you don't need a lawyer, but you need an engineer. Lawyer's at least of your worries right now, but you've got to have somebody, uh, draw your stormwater management plan up. So we'll see where that lays. That's probably going to come down the road to us sooner or later, but right now that's the status report on that. I did sign off on a, uh, building permit that came in between our last meeting and now. It just wasn't on the agenda tonight because I just picked it up this afternoon and reviewed it, but it was well under 40,000 square feet. That's the applicant's Tyler Boyle, 16 Gun Road extension, um, constructing a house there. So I signed off on, on that building permit. Then I would ask that someone make a motion just to formally approve it.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Motion made by Dan and seconded by Cindy. All in favor? Cindy?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, 300. Um, again, not much on the agenda. Moving right along, uh, communications, Richard Harris, um, filled out our DOT application, DOTA to the PVPC. I, I sent that to you folks to review. We did a nice job with that outlining what the, uh, we're asking to have done this year if we get that contract. So that was submitted. Uh, I sent that in and signed it before the 30th. However, then they sent through an email and they had an extension on it until February something. But anyway, it's, it's made the deadline and before that. So that's submitted. Uh, any committee reports of any sort, updates on stuff?
Um, I will say the open space committee, that's not a new report, but we're proceeding with our project, working with Catastrophe Land Trust. We're going to be holding two events this month, inviting, um, landowners for the most part living up on the, or owning land on the upper northwest part of Southampton, up above the Ty Carmody, um, to, to understand that they might, this is an opportunity if they wish to have their land conserved to either sell to a conservation entity, it may not be the town, um, or have a permanent conservation restriction on it, or, and those two events are going to be held at Glendale Ridge Winery. Uh, you pick, they're supposed to pick one and I'm just getting the invitations in this week. So it's kind of a busy time. That's the only report I've got. Um, we haven't, CPC has not met in a long time and, um, I don't think I'm on any other go Master Plan Implementation Committee, but we certainly haven't met in a long, long time. So I guess that's all I got, I have.
Yeah. Well, this, I mean, this is absolutely nothing new with planning board, but I'm really excited that the technology committee finally got the phones upgraded in town, in Town Hall, the municipal building. So now we have modern phones. So that's a win.
That is a big thing, yeah.
And I, I believe I should make it aware to you that I joined the housing committee because I would, I think I could help out there. So my applications, I haven't, haven't gotten a response yet, but, um, you know, with the cross over with planning board, I think there'll be, uh, some good work to be done.
Speaking of housing, I just, um, a couple of weeks back, I asked Tom Gunn, the water superintendent, uh, to send me a plan of where the town water, um, went in town, these streets it covered. Cause I know a lot of places in Southampton don't have town water. But, um, he obliged and sent it to Mark Reed, which printed it out because it's a map, pretty good sized map. I didn't have the capability. Mark was nice enough to print it out. And it shows where the water main goes throughout the town. And the reason I, I requested that is moving forward with, uh, options for housing, it made me think that, and, and what prompted it is a couple of places in Northampton that have been done for affordable housing where it's on town water, but it's on private septic. And, you know, putting on multiple units, I've seen three units on a, on a parcel that's less than an acre. And it got me thinking. I say, well, how are they able to do this? So I talked to Jerry Swanson at the Board of Health as well. So I said, well, what's the regs for, um, how small can you get a lot to build a house? And she said, the smallest you can get, provided it's a two bedroom house, is a half an acre. Okay. Now, most of the, most of the lots in town are an acre or plus. So a two bedroom is a half an acre. Um, you can do three bedroom septic on town water at three quarters of an acre. And naturally, four bedrooms would have to be an acre plus. So that, that's interesting. However, when you think of that concept, okay, jeez, we've got small lots. We maybe we can pull something off here when it comes to, uh, town water and private septic because you know as well as I do, if you have, if you got a well and you've got a septic on the same parcel, it's got to be 100, 200 feet apart. So it doesn't work that way. But on town water it would. But then if you, you designate areas in town or lot sizes you reduce to accommodate that, how are you going to enforce that someone is not going to build market rate housing on a lot that you, you have a concept that you want to be affordable? But what's going to prevent them from building something? They could, they could build something, you know, maybe two, three stories high like a condo on a small lot and blow the whole thing out of the water like, um, Northampton, some of the places in the Bay State section of Northampton claimed to. So I don't know.
To me, to me, Paul, that sounds like Richard should give us his two cents on that because.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, and whether or not there's something we could do in zoning, in a zoning bylaw to, um, facilitate affordable housing and not what you just said, the market, you know, some developer might come in and say, wait, nice lot, nice location. Why would I want to make it an affordable house? I might want to make it a market rate house.
Yeah, yeah. It, I don't know if it could be done with deed restriction or whatever, but it's, it's interesting. Um, I got to, I get excited about it when you know what you can do, um, with smaller sized lots, knowing, um, you know, the town water versus private septic is. But then you say, well, jeez, are you going to, are you going to monitor that and make sure that it's done, um, in the spirit of the zoning that you created? But.
I'm glad, I'm glad you looked at it. Seriously, I think that's great that you are looking into it and let's see what we can do with that.
Yeah, we'll, we'll have to discuss that. I, I, um, I don't have any of this in writing, but it just, I'll send it along to Jim Seamy and I guess, you know, we'll hammer it out down the road. But that's, you're right, Richard Harris would certainly know how, if anything, you'll be able to, uh, create that and will make that stick.
Hmm, I have a, I have a question. Maybe you know historically how we ended up inviting East Hampton to bring their sewer system into our town? Was that planning board, a select board or?
How we invited them?
How did that, how? How did that happen? Because I'm thinking, I look at Westfield and, you know, where one of the, the properties being bought for building affordable housing and inviting Westfield to extend down College Highway could allow for some more affordable housing. Even, even with the, the project that Mark Reed was just talking about.
Um, there was a conversation, uh, number one, I think, uh, when Red Rock was built years ago and the Harley Davidson and the car wash, True Heart's car wash on College Highway.
Mm-hmm.
You know, the East Hampton extended to those folks the opportunity to tap into sewer, which they all are. Um, how far down they go, I mean, you know, you run into, then you've got poosers after the True Hearts. I don't know about the other side of the road, but, um.
So.
And I don't know who the applicant or, um, of those projects would have had to petition East Hampton. It wouldn't have been from us.
I see.
Hey, we want you, we want to develop this property and we use your sewer. I would think it was up to the applicant to petition them to do that.
Okay, thank you.
But then on the Westfield side, Dan.
Yeah.
From what I remember, and Ryan Gielherd can, uh, explain it better, but years ago down the road, that was brought up. And you mentioned how when Cumberland Farms was built up there on Route 10 in the, uh.
On the corner?
By seven Bs by the 202 intersection.
Mm-hmm.
They did the, um, the work there for the sewer in the town of Westfield. And he said there's a problem. They had a hell of a time because of the, I don't know whether it was clay or ledge or rock that was in there. And he claimed that, you know, it's not, it's not as easy as it looks sometimes depending on what the, uh.
Yep.
The terrain is, uh, to do that. But he said it was pretty difficult, um, to, to excavate in there.
Mm-hmm. Well, thanks for the insight and the history on that. It's good to, good to know.
I have a question, a little bit off topic, but sometimes I drive around town and I see new buildings and I don't remember hearing, now I don't make every single planning board meeting, but for example, the new building that's going on the location where Sheldon's Ice Cream is, you know, there was a building close to the road. Was that a permitted project? And did planning board see that permit? It's just such an.
No, that, that was maybe something Cindy, your rose up, um, on your screen. I don't know if that was something by right, but it never came to us.
Isn't it supposed to? I mean, for the filing of the deed, isn't supposed to be a sign off on, on the town? I'm just guessing, but.
I, I don't know about that. Uh, I can check into it. But we, we've approved, I don't think we've approved 10 building permits in the last two, two years, you know, given COVID and the building cost of materials, it was very, very few. In fact, I'll have an exact number pretty quick because I've got to make out the annual town report. So I'll have the numbers for that in the next couple of weeks when I complete that. But uh, we haven't, we haven't issued a lot of building permits. I'll check in on that. It's an interesting, um, question to see what prompted them to be able to put that up.
Hmm, okay.
Other than that, I don't have anything, but I do have warrants. I had lots of bills that we've got to pay here that all of a sudden caught up to us. And I'm going to read them off individually, but I'm going to ask for one vote. And if anybody has a problem with any, then I'll, I'll certainly leave that out and we can discuss it. But these are all, um, three of them are from Richard Harris. And let's see. Red Barn Storage Consulting and the decision and the peer review that he did and the work he did for Red Barn Storage was 10, 12, 50. Now, keep in mind, Red Barn Storage and, um, some of these others were all prepaid because there was a, uh, a quote given upfront and the applicant had to pay that bill. And whatever his services were, less than what he had quoted, they're going to be refunded. But, uh, so on the 10, 12, 50, Richard Harris, Red Barn Stormwater out of that was 487, 50. And the Rattle Hill Road Solar Project that we did was, uh, 562, 50.
Is that one reimbursed also, or is that?
I'm sorry, let me, let me go back a minute. 525 was Rattle Hill Road and 487, 50 was for Red Barn Storage for a total of 10, 12, 50. What was that, Cindy?
So the Rattle Hill Road one, does the applicant have to pay that as well?
Yeah, they, they paid that.
Okay, okay.
The next one, Richard Harris for Planning Board Consulting in general, which is all of his consulting done with Ecode and, um, just general consulting, um, for the last three months, 562, 50. Uh, another one from Richard Harris regarding zoning and Ecode edits and such, $750. The next one is VHB, $500 for the Gill Farm Peer Review. And then finally, VHB for the Red Barn Peer Review he did on the stormwater was for $2,750. So we have Richard Harris for 10, 12, 50, 562, 50, 750, VHB 500, VHB 27, 50. Now, all but the, um, Richard Harris 562, 50 comes out of our budget. The 750, uh, invoice from Richard Harris comes out of the ARPA funds that were given to us for zoning vision. So all the rest, 10, 12, 50, 527, 50 were paid by the, um, Red Barn Storage and the solar people upfront.
So I move to approve payment of all those warrants that were just read to us.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made by Cindy and seconded by Dan. All in favor, Cindy?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Other than that, I don't have anything else. Anybody else got any?
Yeah, I, I have one more thing. Uh, this is, I've been attending, of course, I'm on the Public Safety Building Committee. And, um, I've also attended a couple of the meetings of the Ad Hoc Senior Center Feasibility Committee. Uh, there's going to be a joint meeting at noon, um, on Thursday, the 9th of February of the two committees. Um, and I, I'm not expecting any startling information, but both committees are looking at the same lots because of what's available in our town. And, uh, uh, there's no decision on any of, any of the lots. But if anybody wants to attend that joint meeting, it is by Zoom and it'll be posted in the, you know, my town government under the Ad Hoc Senior Center Committee, um, agenda. I'll try to put it in the other one too, just in case. So if that's, might be of interest for anyone to listen to. Um, the Senior Center Feasibility Committee is really moving along very well because the will that would, you know, the request by that gentleman that left 2.5 million dollars had very, had a timeline on when they have to come up with, um, a review. And they're doing very well with that. The Public Safety Building Committee has suffered a significant situation twice. There's been postings to have firms, design firms submit an RFQ for the feasibility of where to put it and, and the design. And twice we've had zero applications. Ed was approached by one of the firms. He didn't. Ed was approached by, uh, one of the firms, he didn't say who, who took it upon themselves to give him some feedback. Turns out that the $75,000, uh, which was ARPA money for the purpose of developing this, um, RFQ was solely, was, was seriously inadequate. So the committee looked back and did a, a major amount of revision on, on the, um, proposal that, you know, people would review and what kind, what the deliverables are meant to be. And so it'll be reposted. Um, I didn't stay for the full select board meeting last night, Joy. I assume that the select board approved the, uh,
Yes.
Proposal. Am I right about that?
Yes.
Okay. So, um, uh, good thing because we sure as heck need to get going on this. It's been months just doing on this one aspect of it. So that's just a little update because I thought you all were, would be interested in that. So that's it.
Joy, anything from your, uh, position?
No, Cindy covered it.
Okay. Otherwise I will entertain a motion to return.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Cindy, seconded by Dan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, have a good week, Cindy. Have a good trip up north.
Very good.
Good night everyone.
Thank you.
Good night, Joy. And, um, I'll get ahold of Paul, make sure he's with us and Dan, put that on your calendar too, please, so we got a corner.
All right, yeah.
For those hearings. Okay.
We'll do. Thank you.
Thank you. Good night, everyone.
Night.